...volunteering their time, which are parents, to support the league for that. And this year, we were approached by the Paterno or Police here in Elgin, at Robert J. Christie election number 185. They were approached by a family member of two Detroit police officers that had passed away. One was a lieutenant, one was an officer, and they were looking for something to do with a donation from that family. And they approached me and asked me if we could find anything. Well, seeing that they're police officers, one was a Marine, one was an Army, retired Army, so we decided that what better way to do it than a forty-foot white flagpole out in the middle of the quad, out in the middle of all four fields, with a fifteen-by-ten-foot American flag flying over it. And it will be lit twenty-four seven. So it'll be beautiful at all, so have a plaque with those officers' names on it. We're gonna dedicate that that day also. So there's a lot of exciting things going on. I just wanted to kind of personally, I sent an email to the superintendent, but that was just in case I couldn't get here from work, but I want to invite everyone of you guys, if any of you are available to come out, please check in at the concession stand when you get there, so we can recognize your presence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Check in at eight forty-five.
You don't have to stay. Thank you. All right. You had your opportunity. When are you turning around, sir?
Yeah, I think I was.
You guys, that's, don't take them with you.
Right.
Let me know, Andy, if you want me to...
Oh, yeah, please, can tell, oh no, it's all you.
Um, we'll start with, pass it out, the monthly budget update. And there are some figures that I do want to review here. No, just one at a time. The, if you, I'll make this a little bit bigger, and then extras can go to the audience.
Thank you, ma'am.
The revenue, again, this is a comparison, we're where we were at the same time last year, of encumbered expenditures. The revenues were in the plus three point six-three, but I wouldn't get too excited about that, because really, that's just a matter of when we draw on money, or when certain funds come in. Our revenues were usually within one percent at the end of the year, because revenues are easier to dial in on than expenditures. And so, but nonetheless, I'd rather see that number than a negative number. In regard, this is a number that I am pleased to see, because again, it remembers it's the encumbered percentage, and so it is a benchmark. Is it foolproof? No, because certain expenditures, certain bills come at different times, but still, it's a benchmark of where we were at this time last year in certain line items. And so, I'm pleased that, right now, our expenses, not overall, but just even just percentage-wise, are about two percent less than where we were last year, holding the budget of year-to-date to what the revised budget is. And so, Dorothy, with, I guess, operation and maintenance, and then transportation, if you could address those two, those are two numbers.
I would like to address the twenty-two, the twenty-two percent in transportation. We have paid January and February transportation bills, whereas last year, we only paid through December, so that's a major part of that. We've also have two Dean buses within, in service, two more than we had last year, replacing ours, so those costs have increased as well. But for the most part, it is paying two months' worth of bills further this year than we have last year. We only had December paid.
In operation and maintenance, I'm not celebrating too early, but it was, hopefully we are out of the winter, it wasn't out of winter. And then also, we had some consolidation, even sort of consolidation, like, and that was two years ago, coming up here, but we still had some lingering construction, not construction, but just operation items, that we really didn't have this year. And so, I'm hoping we can continue to stay on course to be under budget in that area. So, but transportation, my, the point there, though, transportation will level out here because of when we pay the bills, basically, so.
And that's because they don't send the bills regularly, it's...
Well, it's just a timing issue. You know, they sent January and February, and we paid them in March by this year, but maybe last year, they did not, you know, they, we only had December, you know, so it's a timing of when they send the bills.
We just get to hang on to our money longer.
Right.
Okay, before we go into, we did meet with the, and I appreciate, I did ask Andy to have your board members, Sharon and Chuck, I do appreciate you taking time to meet with the Department of Treasury, and it was very beneficial meeting, I certainly want to share with the community. But before we get, get into that, that particular, and certainly Chuck and Sharon, you're welcome to chime in on what you thought of the meeting as well. But before that, just to review where we are fiscally, right now, for this year, I'll scroll to the top, so the amended budget, right here, right in this area here is where I am. We have a year-ending projection right now, one point three-two percent. Now, we do hope to, and we're already, if you go into the next year, you can see where we have added two hundred thousand, projecting that right over here. We feel that it'd at least be two hundred thousand in the plus of what we're budgeting right now. And again, we're out of the winter, I believe, hopefully here, and hopefully we can hold tight with expenditures, hopefully there's no major breakdowns.
No delays.
This, that, and the other, you know, things do happen, and that's why we try to budget conservative. But I'm hoping it's higher than the two hundred thousand mark, but the point is, we will end, I believe, you know, three percent, I'm hoping a little bit higher than three percent, but right now, we have us at one point, three-two percent. Next year, to get to five percent, and we are going into closed session to discuss the negotiations, as we do reach that benchmark, or at least attempt to reach that benchmark at five percent, our cuts are roughly nine hundred twenty, nine hundred thirty thousand dollars, that we need to realize next year to reach five percent. I know you've heard a million times, administrators, you've heard a million times, for anybody that watches this on TV or community members, it won't always be this drastic, because right now, we have, right here it is, these numbers right here, those are negative numbers, and it's compounding each year, if you have negative four hundred thousand, it can compound to eight hundred thousand, and it's compounding like a snowball going downhill. We have that, right now, going against us, we have to get up to five percent, and we have declining enrollment. Once we break that trend, in next year, the projection that we would have would be anywhere from three hundred fifty to five hundred thousand dollars, it compounds the other way. And so, and then hopefully, we are close to five percent. So all we'll have to combat is the student loss, that a lot of schools in Michigan are going through. I'm not just giving a bad speech here, but we really are driving on the corner, it's just, it's at its darkest before the dawn, right? I mean, it's at its toughest point because of the three factors that we have. Now, again, referring to, if we look at the seventeen, sixteen, seventeen school year, our goal as Board of Education was to be in between four and six percent. If things go well, Dorothy and I differ on what we believe that number is, I'm probably a little more optimistic, but I appreciate that she's maybe a little more realistic, what have you, but we, we're not real far from that, from that number, so, and it comes down to student loss. We have more student loss than we anticipated, plain and simple. So that is where we are budget-wise, fiscally, and we did have a meeting, I thought it was a very positive meeting with the Department of Treasury. I'm very pleased that their disposition, their attitude seems to be one of, they are here to help us get to five percent. And does that happen overnight? No, but the sooner you get there, the better, because again, that compounding number, so the more you have to compounding, the opposite of what we're going through now, the better off it will be for future budgets. And so, I was pleased, and certainly Mr. Bustell.
Yeah, I was pleased, too. I thought they were extremely helpful. I thought it was, and I don't know how Chuck feels, but it was like we were comparing apples to oranges when they were talking, because the way we do all of our payroll and monies going out and revenue coming in, they put it in different categories, and it was hard trying to find where ours was versus where they thought we were missing, where we didn't. It was just in another spot, the way we do our bookkeeping. So I thought that was unusual, but I think we have to go...
Those are good numbers to look at.
True.
Yeah, they're great numbers to look at, yeah.
And theirs are the ones we're gonna have to really go by, because they're the bottom line, whether ours might be correct and everything else, what they're saying is, is going to value where they put us, you know?
And what Ms. Stilner is referring to, what they, what they do is they take simple data like enrollment. And so you can see, we are within, with these other schools, within the enrollment, and then it looks at how many administrators you have, how many non-instructional pairs, teachers, and so on. But again, like Sharon said, it was really not an apples-to-apples comparison, because while one school may call it administrators, it's just a support person in another school. And also with teaching, we may have a lot of our teachers, non-instructional teachers or pairs, paid out of grant funding, because we have hired freedom reduced. So it was really tough to compare by just taking enrollment, and so, but there were a few comparisons that they used, they would also, you can see down below here, they had, you had total staff, and so then it would break down average salaries and teacher salary rate and total payroll and so on. But again, I'm not making excuses, I'm just explaining further what Sharon, Sharon was talking about. It's, it's even tough to look at that data, because maybe we just have a staff with more experience, I won't say older staff, but a staff with more experience, and so of course your salaries, the way teacher salaries are set up would be higher. But nonetheless, I think it was good, I don't know if you want to add anything to Mr. Bustell?
No, it, it's a good exercise, but the, it's very complicated, as John said, because the numbers and the accounts don't match up, and somehow, we're gonna have to figure out a way. It's like one group of people talking one language and another talking another language. So we're gonna have to figure out how we coalesce, so we're all on the same page.
Speaking the same language.
Right. Now, let me, let me, I have a question about that. So because the way we're audited, this might be a Dorothy question, because the way we're audited with all the Gatsby stuff, doesn't the state recognize that, or do they have something entirely different from even that?
See, what this is, is they're giving you the amount of employees in the categories, okay? Based on the rep, which is a personnel reporting system. Now, the FID is, is sent up by local districts, and then our auditors send up the same numbers, okay? So the FID is actual financial data that is checked two ways. The rep, however, is a reporting system that reports the amount of teachers, you know, teacher certifications are checked. So what they're, what they do is they get this information from the rep on how many, you know, administrators each district has, and how many, so, you know, there is no accountability for the rep, okay? There is accountability for the financial information, but not the rep per se. There's no rep police, like there are financial police. So it is just a tool, based on how districts report their personnel. That's what the numbers of employees are based on, and what category they're in.
And you can't translate it through Google Translate, I suppose?
They also use fifteen, sixteen rep data, and I have sixteen, seventeen.
Apples and oranges, yeah.
Right, so it just made it really...
It's a tool, they're just giving us places in fifteen, sixteen, where we were hired, you know, although we're in certain categories, but we're sixteen, seventeen, we're already, you know, we're moving forward.
Now, some data that, that goes a step further than data that I presented to you along this line, you can see the highlighted area there, the deficit spending started in two thousand, two thousand twelve, at two hundred fifty thousand, and peaked in two thirteen, two thousand thirteen, at one point one million. So you can see what I mean, when that, when that deficit is reversed here this coming year, and hopefully we're close this year to a flat budget, that, that is what I was referring to, and of course, correlated with that defined equity, went down from twenty-three percent to where we are today, rebuilding it. This was a good number, though, you know, it's still a negative number, but if you look at our decon of, decon of students this last year, it was minus one point six-eight, compared to last year was minus two point six-eight, two thousand fifteen, minus five point seven-seven. So, so that, that was the year that I was, those two years, fourteen and fifteen, were, that's what I'm seeing, we're really all around the corner, because we lost in just fourteen and fifteen, you're talking almost ten percent of your student body, and you had a one point one million dollar deficit, so it's been an uphill climb that we're close to turning the corner. So I, this, this is, this report here is just further, going further into the projections as compared to what, what I've shown you before. And so, we did review with them our consolidation effort and the savings that that's realized and so on, so.
Did we learn any insights back to the benchmarking from the Treasury data that gave us insights or aha, we should probably look here or there, or was it really just focused on trying to understand and reconcile?
It was pretty, it was pretty jumbled, pretty jumbled. You couldn't look at a line item as, compared to their line item, very, very...
So we didn't walk away with aha type insights?
As Sharon said, apples and oranges.
But what they did, too, was, they didn't have all the information, because when Dorothy and John both did a really very good explanation of how we do everything, and they agreed, well, that's fine, blah, 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 but then they couldn't find in their paperwork anything that was relevant to what we were talking about, and it's like, they came, they were very nice, but I'm not so sure they came real prepared on knowing what to do.
Yeah, and we'll work with them over time periodically, and we have reports, we're gonna turn into them. So I, I think it's gonna be a great partnership, we just need to sift through it.
I think so, too.
And like Mr. Bustell was saying, yeah, calibrate it, that'd be a good way to put it, so.
Yeah, and the nice part about that, too, is they were the first ones to admit they're not experts in that, they're numbers, guys, but what they do have for us is they've got resources and they have experts, so if they go through your books or go through and they say, boy, it looks like transportation's an issue, it's high, it's, you know, they can send in a consultant that can help us out with that a little bit, and that might be, where we end up someday, might be helpful.
Be very helpful, yeah, yeah. I think it went very well.
And they're free.
Right.
They're free.
But I think they, like you said, I think they will work with us with no problems.
Yeah, I was briefly in the disposition, and it wasn't that we're gonna get you...
Exactly, right.
I think it was more, let's work together, get this figured out together.
That's good.
Exactly.
Okay, you want me to go?
Oh, please.
Okay.
Yeah, let the suffering end.
The irony, as we approach our very important May second election, is this will be the shortest of the facility and technology plan updates. When I used to go try to see basketball, actually, my practices towards the tournament were the shortest, because at that point, we're just tuning in, and resting, really, for the game at that point. Where we are, we had a very productive, and maybe Phil and Heather or Uncle will say a few words here in a second, it's been a huge shift of momentum, like I haven't seen in a long time, as far as the November election and what we're looking at here as we go into the May second election. So, a three-minute summary here, I just want people to know, and I'm gonna reiterate, here at the last board meeting, I'm presenting that before the election, and also the update, my last update, that I have this month and next week, or this weekend, next week, or this current week, that I want to make sure people in our community understand that this technology facility vote and money that we're seeking is part of a master plan, that was simply to align curriculum, teach our kids the best we can with life skills, extracurricular activities, and get our finances in order, and provide the best technology and facilities that we can provide for our students. And it's that simple. When I, when I talk to groups, I just use this presentation now, I present it to Al Johnson and staff tonight. This, you can see my whole number one there, it doesn't get more conservative than security technology that's not eighteen-years-old, roofing, proper roofing, heating and cooling. It's pretty conservative, point number one. And then point number two I make, even, I won't say when, I'll say yeah, or I won't say when, but I'll say when, even when this does pass, we will still be just in the middle of the counting. So not only is it basic what we're asking for, but it's appropriate, because it's not greedy at all. And so, I feel very optimistic about it, and like, I'm on a sports analogy, right? I feel like we're peaking, I really feel like, Al was the head coach, I mean, it was all about peaking for the tournament, wasn't it? It was, and there were a number of things that went into that, as a coach, you couldn't even control, the attitude of the guys, the attitude of the community, the fitness level, were there injuries, there's a lot to it, and I feel, if you want to elaborate on what you, what you've seen with the group and...
Yeah, it's been, you know, really good stuff, we've had a group of about twenty to thirty people that have been participating, members of the community, members of the board, you know, some of the principals, the staff, and administrators, it's been really good. We've done every, the principals and their team's done a fantastic job getting word out to parents, you know, we've been working on getting, you know, word out to community members and things like that, just trying to educate folks, keep the conversation evolving, keep it relevant, and most everything has been very positive. So I think, you know, our, our mission right now is just to keep working the program, what we're doing, and to look to have everything ready by May second.
In November, I worked with Ray on the same type of committee to try to get this passed, and it didn't go as well as it is going now. It's going a lot better, a lot more positive feedback, a lot of people saying they're gonna get out there and vote, and I think we have good momentum, I think, with all the staff making their phone calls, I think everything's going really well.
Al?
Yeah, no, I, you were right, spot on with the, just the way, the whole demeanor and kinda how everyone's approaching it, it's, you don't feel like you're bailing anything right now, it seems like everyone. Today, John went around the table, and everybody talked about the interactions they've been having, and it's not, you know, we're not there to just make each other feel good, we were trying to figure out and make sure that we're moving in the right direction. I kinda thought that, too. I felt really good walking out of there today, that, you know, the support seems to be there. It's just a matter now of getting people there, and I think we'll be in good shape.
Any questions?
Make the motion that the Board of Education approves all consent agenda items, including agenda, minutes, personnel items, Treasurers' report, and bills as listed, items A through C.
It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion? Let's see, Shar Kinney's retiring, good for her, congratulations. So, anything else? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Information items, after Stricker, the budget review, RISA review, I know Crystal told me to talk about this. The budget, RISA budget, RISA sends a budget to the local Boards of Education for them to either, to pass a resolution to either support that budget or to not support the budget, and it has to be voted on, the resolution has to go to RISA before June first, which means it needs to happen at our May meeting, which, that's when we will have it on our agenda. Typically, they have voted to disseminate the budget to us by this time, they are in, they are currently in their meeting right now as we speak, also getting ready to make that vote, so copies of it are not available tonight, they will be available tomorrow or so, and Crystal will email them to everybody, if anybody wants hard copies of them, Crystal will have some of those available for, if you want to come and get one.
And they'll be here next month, very brief presentation, and they actually had to go to East China after this, so they, they will be first thing on our presentations, five-minute, just to answer any questions, so, I think, is Kevin himself, I think?
Tracy Reckle.
All right, yeah, so...
Who?
Their business manager, so.
In the last few years, we voted no.
Yeah, yep, so...
That'll be interesting this year.
It still moves forward, so, yeah.
So administrative contracts, it's back to you now.
Yeah, basically, the administrative contracts are coming to you, as always, this time of year, as an information item, and so, if there are any questions...
These are the administrate, the individual administrative contract.
That is correct.
Not the contract, not... Not the master administrative contract.
Right, great, good point.
So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
So if you have any questions, let me know, and I can shoot the answer out to the entire group, so everyone can see. What's that? Right, saying that it's been...
Same as it's always, yeah.
Okay, let me move on.
Please.
Okay, all right. Brian?
Yep, really quick, from the high school, junior high, just again, we're in the midst of the testing, we had our SAT testing day, which we thought went very successful, and again, we're also right now in the midst of the M-step, which, a lot more positive feedback rose from the students and the teachers that have been through that process, again, we did, again, we did some changes that this year, we got substance, so that with their content, teaching, if there are seventh graders in there with their math test, their math test, teachers in there with them, as long, as well as Ms. Adams, the adverse teachers in there as well, to kind of both provide support for the students in there. And also, again, kudos to Mrs. Stage for, again, having the kids write down their answers on a piece of paper first before transferring to the computer, and we seem to be getting much better responses from the kids. So right now, you know, fingers crossed, it seems like the process is going a lot smoother this year. We had no technology glitches, so thank you, Evan. And then tomorrow, we have a makeup for SAT, FESAT, but again, everything's been going smoother for testing. This week, actually, the first time since I've been here, we have a couple of teachers organized, we're having a book fair for grades seven through ten, really, that is all this week to go through and peruse and purchase books, but that's the first time here, and we're gonna see how that goes, and hopefully that's something we continue with. This Saturday, we have a prom, and coming up here soon, May nineteenth, we have our sixth-grade orientation, we're gonna have the sixth grader to bust here, so they can show them around, kind of worked out well, with Mr. Valente, that we're actually doing a kind of outdoor cookout thing with them, so they'll be there for that part, so kind of nice for them to come over and participate in that, but, you know, things are going well, so, thank you very much.
Okay, Mitch?
Spring sports are in full swing, we have our first bowl track meet tomorrow here, four-thirty, and for anybody listening, we also have a big meet on May sixth, which is always, always looking for people to volunteer to help with that event, so that's May sixth here in the morning, it's an all-day event. May eleventh is the basketball banquet, the varsity and JV boys, and the main reason for mentioning that is it's gonna be open to any of the basketball alumni or anybody that wants to stop by, it is Coach Highstreet's farewell, so he has decided to retire, as many of you saw in the Times Herald, they did a nice article on him as well. Last thing I have is the girls soccer team is off to a great start, and they are undefeated in the BWAC, and got a message right at the last meeting that they beat last year's BWAC champs today, which was Almont, beat them three-one this afternoon.
Oh, wow, yeah.
Very, very young squad, too, we have four freshmen and two sophomores starting on that team, and they're doing very well.
Hi, so we're at the end of our fifth grade M-step testing, the kids have been doing an outstanding job, I'm very proud of them, the test is long, and they really have been just hunkering down and getting it done, and writing all their answers down, so I think we'll be happy with their, their performance. So right now, we're just doing fifth grade, starting next week, we'll be doing sixth, third, and fourth grade. We had our sixth grade band... We had our sixth grade band concert last week and it was a huge difference from the November concert to now. They really grew a lot. Dr. Stricker and I were pretty impressed at the difference, just in that little bit.
Well, their first song, we didn't know it was a joke.
Yeah.
And so he opened it, or she opened it up and they just, it sounded terrible. And I, Brooke and I went, oh my gosh. It worked, the joke worked because we fell for it. And then she said, we're just kidding. I'm like, because I didn't even, I'm not music person, but I knew that wasn't good.
It was not a joke, it was like just good enough to make.
Yeah, we looked at each other like, oh my gosh. So, but anyway.
But everybody laughed, it was cute. He's done a really nice job with them so far. So coming up though, we'll have the sixth through twelfth grade choir concerts on May 10th and 11th. And Suneha always does a great job putting on a fantastic show. And Aaron Mahalo will also have the second and third graders do a music program on May 18th. So in addition to that, Melissa and I both received Walk for Summer Reading grants and we're going to start that tomorrow. People, our students and parents are able to join staff members and we kind of do a twenty-minute walk around the school and the school grounds. If weather permitting, if not, we'll hold it inside. And then we got pretty substantial grants to purchase some books to give to the kids on their way out for the summer.
Melissa?
The drama club just finished up their final spring play and that was The Wizard of Oz. That was our kindergarten through third grade students. They were the munchkins, the flying monkeys and the poppies, I believe. And our high school students, our secondary students were the main characters in the cast. They did a wonderful production Friday night and Saturday during the day, both full houses. So I'm not quite sure if they're completely sold out, but they sure did look like they were. A lot of fun. Kids did a great job. We also have coming up a music concert for kindergarten. Do you want to see something cute? May 16th at six-thirty, our kindergarten will be up there performing for Mr. Aaron Mahalo. And May 17th is our leader in the leadership day, where our kids are going to be showcasing all of their leadership that they've done for the entire year. So we're real excited about that. May is a busy month. We have field trips coming up, May 10th and 11th, our kindergarten field trips. May 25th, our first grade field trips. So a lot of excitement there. This week, we have kindergarten roundup. I did put this on the curriculum sheet because I think it's important to talk about that. So we have kindergarten roundup Thursday and Friday. I did want to let the board know that at this point, our kindergarten roundup numbers are a bit low, lower than expected. So we're at currently seventy-eight, which we're hoping. So if you know anybody out there that has a little one coming in, please send them my way. We can get them on the books and get them ready to go. Highlights from last month in curriculum. I'm not going to hit on the student, the state test again. I think you heard quite a bit about them. But I am keeping tabs on it. They, like I said, we're getting a lot of positive feedback coming in from the kids. Evan's been there if there's been any issues at all to get them solved. So the kids are putting forth effort and I think that's the biggest thing we're hearing this year that we really want to hear is they're taking their time. Science, NEOL, I-7, 12 committees are still continuing to work on their curriculum proposals. Currently, they're reviewing the materials and looking for feedback from different groups and stakeholders. So parents, students, as well as trying to sign some of the lessons there. We will be bringing you a curriculum proposal update to the board in May for those two committees. Elementary reading and math benchmarking is finished for the third marking period. The intervention groups are now in place. And teachers have been in contact with parents to follow through on reading and math growth plans at this point in the year. And coming up, it's going to be, May is next week already. But end of the year testing will begin mid-May and then all of that data will be used for the school improvement process for planning for the upcoming school year. Getting busy.
Doug?
Good evening. We have quite a few things happening in Point Jingle, exciting things. So on Saturday, we will be celebrating what is known in the month of April as the month of the young child, where across the nation, early at schools and facilities celebrate child development. And each week is a different theme, cognitive, emotional, social and so on. But this Saturday, we'll be celebrating creativity with kite day. Last year, you guys had kite day and so we'll follow suit with what Mrs. Williams had prepared last year, where the students will be making kites. We have some pinwheels. They'll make flower arrangements out of some paper crafts. We have some felt coloring. Popcorn punch Dairy Queen will be there with free ice cream coupons. Place and Fire will be there for display purposes only.
Hopefully.
Albinack Historical Society, I thought this was kind of neat. They're actually bringing in handmade toys that were in some of the one-room schoolhouses in this township for the students to sort of play with and kind of see a little bit of the past. And that'll be from ten-thirty to twelve-thirty. Also, summer registration will be the seventeenth of May from four to seven at Point Jingle. And also, thanks to the generosity of the Albinack Lion S Club, we will be hosting free vision screenings for students who are one through five years of age at the same time, same place, same day. We also have our preschool field day on May 19th and preschool graduation is getting planned for May. And a few preschool field trips over to Harson Island. Harson's Island. Mr. Newman is one of our parents and he owns like a store and he has like a little pizza shop in there, so he's going to teach the students how to make pizza.
Board reports? I have one. There've been questions. I've talked with each of you about our plans for, after Dr. Stricker leaves us. So I'd like to have everybody figure out a time when, I'd like to have a special meeting in May to discuss that so we can have that issue on the table to take care of. So we'll be, I'll be in touch. I'll get with Crystal and we'll get something figured out so everybody's on the same page so we can schedule to do that.
And then the first week of May.
Okay, so I guess we'll have it, I mean, we won't have it the first week.
We won't have it. Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else? Assistant superintendent's report?
Just a couple of things tonight. We just got one of the FBSAT spots. For next year, we'll receive the same number that we received the last couple of years. Generally, that's sixty-four or thirty-two, depending on if you're doing a full-day program or half-day programs. History-wise, we've done them both in the past. Last year, the numbers were pretty low, so we did thirty-two full-day slots as opposed to sixty-four half-day slots. Philosophy is we try to get as many kids involved in that as possible and kind of do it just pending how many people are enrolled. So actual enrollment for that doesn't take place till the summer, but they let us have the slots ahead of time so we can start planning. Negotiations, I know John's going to talk about some of this in closed session, but we did meet again last Thursday and I think, again, steady progress going in the right direction. Had a lot of good discussion, a lot of dialogue, but again, John will share with you during closed session, but I thought pretty positive.
Yeah, I did something as well.
And then finally, our consolidated application has now been loaded in our grant system, which is what'll consume me for the better part of the next couple of months here. That's the application where we get all our state and federal money. So we'll be working on that. First, we need to work on our district improvement plan because those are correlated and your application's approved based on your district improvement plan. So both of those items will be going on to our main.
Superintendent's report, you got more?
Yeah, just one. You'll miss me. Won't you, Ron? The program with International Student Exchange Services, which is basically the partnership we are working with Anchor Bay in China. We are still trying to get that program in place for this next school year. However, agree, disagree. Mr. Bustel, if you don't mind me referring to a conversation we had, you know, with the culture, the China culture. Because I'm leaving, the president superintendent, the leader of their school district there, was hesitant to start the program this year. And, you know, I certainly did everything I could. I actually wasn't, I wasn't very happy about it. And I shared that with Young, who we've been working with. And however, it's built on relationships that, because I was the superintendent when they toured, they visited and so on. Me leaving does matter to their culture, you know, whereas I think, this is my interpretation, but in America, we're more as a system. And that's how I saw it. You know, I saw it as that I'm just part of a system, whether I'm here or not. And so, but they are very interested in doing it for sure the following year. But we haven't given up. I did place a call with Leonard Woodside, the superintendent of Anchor Bay, and he's going to talk to their program director to still try to get that for this coming year. But the work is not wasted, but it would just be a following year. But I still, I'm still pushing for this next year because I really think it will benefit us in many ways. The student count certainly is beneficial, but I think that culture of having the best of the best from China come in here, it would be healthy for our kids as well as for them visiting. So I'll keep you posted. I have not given up for next year. But I just wanted to let, because we've talked a lot about it, I wanted to let the community know that that was unanticipated, but that's where we are right now, so.
Visitors and requests? None. Action items, cash borrowing.
We asked the board, we asked that the board approve the resolution to allow us to borrow two million to meet our cash flow needs. The note will go out to bid on mid-May, five-eleven, and the bids will, the lowest bid will be received and accepted May 25th. And we will receive our loan on June 13th.
So I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve the state aid operating notes resolution as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Food service contract renewal?
I'll make a motion the Board of Education approves the one-year renewal of the five-year contract with Chartwells for food services as presented.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? For those, for the newbies here, the state, in their infinite wisdom, came up with a plan where you can, you can contract with your food service provider for up to five years. But then you have to renew each one of those five years. And the state has to approve the paperwork. They have to approve the paperwork before you can say, yes, we'll do it for five years in the whole first place. They also have to say yes for each of these one-year extensions during the five years, which does, when you look at it, it doesn't sound right, but it's what we got, so. That's why we're doing this.
It's giving somebody in Lansing a job.
There we go.
Now, now.
So any other discussion? Hearing none. Go ahead.
Talking about the guy in Lansing, I don't agree with the two percent administration fees. An increase? They automatically put in a two percent increase every year? Boy, isn't that nice of them? Do we have to agree to that?
Is that, is that standard, like? It's not just an Albinack thing, is it, an everywhere thing?
I mean, it's in our five-year contract. And like I said, MDE renews, you know, reviews our contract with Chartwells.
Say we wanted to look at pot, I'm not saying I want to kick Chartwells out, but if you did a rebid, because, I mean, you need to test down, you know, how does that, you know, how do we know we're in the right spot financially?
I can inquire and report to the board next month on that question. You know, I can't answer that because it's a.
But I mean, we pick, correct?
Well, we, I believe we would have picked the lowest bidder.
Yeah, but if that was how long ago, that's all I'm saying.
When did we approve it for the five years? Was that last year?
This is year two, I believe.
This is year two?
There's three more.
So there's three more. So we got it for five years last year. This is the first one-year renewal and we have three more one-year renewals.
Yeah, but now you're talking a ten percent increase in their fees for the duration of this contract. It's a nice little chunk of change they got.
Isn't it the same as for the whole five years? It was a.
Looks like it's a two percent increase every year. That's what you're telling me, right?
Well, you compounded this more than.
Compounded, yeah.
I mean, like in every, I mean, in every contract, there's, you know, like in Dean, there's, it went from two to two-point-seven-five to three next year. I mean, they're all, you know, going up.
Maybe that needs to be looked at too then.
We're out next year at seventeen, eighteen with Dean, so.
And MDE said they would help us rebid that.
But this is rolling, when we say, so we never get out of it.
For five years.
For five.
No. It ends in your five?
No, you're out in five, seventeen, eighteen. And June 30th, two thousand and eighteen, we're out of Dean.
No, I'm talking about.
Chartwells.
Chartwells.
Are we, are we automatically adding a one year to that?
No.
No, no, no.
No, it's just five years and then every five years, you have to go out for bid every five years.
For a whole new contract, for a whole new contract.
Yes, it's required every five years. Says a one-year renewal of a five-year contract.
I just want to make sure it wasn't like the superintendent's contract where it just adds.
No.
No, no. It's not evergreen.
No, this is, this is to renew in one of the five years. Each of, and that's why it doesn't make sense. Each of the, each of the years within the five years has to be voted on. And the paperwork about it has to be sent to the state. They have to approve it and they have to send it back to us every year of, of those five years. At the end of the five years, you're done, but you have to do approvals each year of the five years.
What if we don't approve it?
Well, we can look at it when that five years is getting close to being up.
No, I mean, what happens if we don't approve it this year?
I have no, what happens if we don't approve it?
Well, no, I'm just wondering if we can get that two percent knockoff.
I don't really know. I want to give you the wrong answer. I have talked to my dean about that one. It's part of renewal. I have seen that some districts, you can opt out in that, within that five years. That's what I'm trying to say. But I want to get the true wording of it from my dean first, and I'll pass it to Dorthea and she can send it off to you guys.
Yeah, or if there's a penalty for getting out before the five years or, that would end up making up the difference, or how does that work exactly?
We should, as a board, we should know how that contract works. Shame on us.
Also, when you bid that, Chartwells was the one one you bid on. So if you have no bid.
What I was going to suggest as part of that presentation of the contract is to make sure there's a plan in place for what you're going to do. So if something like that did happen, I would recommend that you have a plan of what you're going to do. If that were the case, if you dropped, I'm not suggesting we do that, but if we were to drop Chartwells, I would have a plan of what, I mean, Al was just joking, but all kidding aside, there would need to be a plan of how you're feeding the kids. Because that wouldn't, that wouldn't be so funny.
Oh, no.
And, and who's, and, and then, well, and then who's going to get to, who's going to get to bid on? When, when we first, the first time we ever hired Chartwells, we, there were like three of them that, that applied. Marriott was one of them, Sedexo was one of them and Chartwells. And Chartwells was, they were called canteen at the time, were like drastically lower than the other two because the other two bid just to bid. They didn't, they did not want it. And then after that time, from the, after the first time, the only one that has ever bid on since has been Chartwells.
And most all, the other schools.
So what we can do is put together information, as you're suggesting, so you can, about the program that we have right now, about the contract we have right now, and even maybe areas, how many schools in the state, yada, 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 with the different companies. But again, as part of that, you know, what are the options and what else are we looking at? But again, as part of that, you know, what are the options and what else are we looking at doing?
Right.
Of course, saving money. I get, I get, I get.
If, maybe Chartwells, if we ask them, would be interested in waiving that 2% in light of where our district is at financially. That's, you know, we, we gotta look everywhere.
I mean, if they waive it, maybe we'll give them another year on their contract.
No, it doesn't work that way.
But my point is, if, if the scenario, what I wouldn't want is superintendent, the scenario of, we say that, that we're not gonna extend the contract for one year if we don't get the 2%.
No, I'm saying that.
I didn't say that.
I'm saying, uh, just to ask them, that they consider that. I'm not saying-
Of course.
Yeah.
Cause you would wanna back up.
Right.
Alright.
Keep in mind, it doesn't affect the general fund. It's the food service fund. It does not help our general fund.
Actually, it's usually in excess. Usually, we have to spend money each year off that.
And the food service fund is totally different than the general fund.
Yeah, but that 2%'s gotta be made up somewhere, so it's gonna be made up by the kids, cost to the kids to pay for their lunch.
I think that's determined as well.
I mean, they're, the 2%-
The price is determined, isn't it? Yeah, that's, that's actually determined. The price of the lunch is already determined.
The state regulates what the average dollar are.
Correct. Well, I think we need as a, and I'm not trying to get out of this moment, I'm just saying a report for us all to understand.
I agree.
Including myself, cause I wasn't prepared. So I mean, I can be prepared with a report.
Review of the contract itself.
The contract and even about what we're just talking about now, about food service, how prices are regulated, contracts are regulated.
I can, I can get something for the next board meeting.
Yeah. Let's do that.
Get my DM, she'll come out here and do a presentation for us, so if you, if you have any agenda, so the new board members can get a better idea of where we're coming from. I'd appreciate that.
Good.
Thank you.
So, anything else?
What, what you been doing this and I-
Well, we have a motion and we have a second, so if there's any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Don't start packing yet. I'll make a motion that the Board of Education go into closed session at, uh, 8:10 for the purpose of discussing negotiations.
Support.
Been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.